I've been a Cali resident for 35 years. I'm one of the trucking's, General Electric. My wife and I came here. We raised our two children here and we're doing our best to spoil our 17 great-grandchildren, probably 17 grands and seven great-grandsons. Our daughter was a student at Cali, which we consider a very fine school. In a few years, expect to see some of our grands and great-grandsons attending also. My education experience related to the trustee position include a master administration degree, a number of terms as adjunct professor in business with the Emory-Riddle-Arnocelli University, and responsible positions with the US government, airlines, and General Electric. I've been the mayor of Parker Field since its inception in 2004. My strengths include significant experience in analysis, planning, and forecasting. I believe I can apply a business approach to help guide this college and continuous contribution to the community through delivering a quality education while being financially responsible and transparent in administrative activities. Thank you.
My name is Ned Graham. I live in Wick Hill, and this is my second run as a term for Cali trustee. And when I first ran, I ran mainly because I felt like the northern part of Cali County needed more representation. And then I thought, well, this time, it's a little different than that. I really like doing that. And I have a brilliant admiration for the school and its administration and the students and the faculty, and I'd like to stay with it, especially the exciting part that just came up with the acquisition of the land in Wellington and our chance of expansion over there. Groundbreaking, I think, is tomorrow over there, and we're really excited about that. My wife Claire is here, and we've been married 62 years, and we have two children, both married, and they each have two children, all boys. And I'm just pleased to be here and pleased to be a member of the Cali Board of Trustees.
Hi, my name is Derek Green. I've been thinking about running for the board for eight, maybe 10 years, and we're finally in a place in my family. The kids are old enough that it won't harm the family for me to go to the meetings. So in four or five more years, they're going to go into high school, and I expect them to take classes from Cali. It's a great opportunity. It's a financial boom for the families to take the opportunity to do that. I want to be part of the program that allows the college to grow and do the programs for the high schools, do the programs for every one of the community. I want to see the college continue to thrive, to grow, but to do it in a viable and economic The complaints that I've heard from a lot of the people in county is they don't know exactly what's going on in the board. So I'd like to be the person that can answer the questions and say, hey, this is why we're spending this money. This is why we're doing this action. So I think that'd be a good solution. Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Jonathan Hanson. Please bear with me, this is my first forum. I've lived in Ark City for about four years. I am currently the pharmacist at Graves Drugs, so some of you may know me from there, have seen me in the store. I do have a wife and four kids. My oldest is 13 and my youngest is six. Three girls, one boy, two dogs, so we're definitely in the thick of it right now. I am running for the Cali Board of Trustees because about a year to two years ago, we started getting more involved with the college, my wife and I, with the fostering of international athletes. She was helping with one of the clubs on campus, and so hearing the needs of the students and then also hearing, you know, other voices in the community, what they have to say about Cali, you know, we just would really like to, I would like to get involved with the college and give back to the community and really help with connecting the college to more of the businesses in the community as well.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Bob Juden. Cali County is my home. I was raised in Ark City. My family consists of my wife Rita. She and I are both retired teachers, and my daughter Jacey, who is also a teacher, and my son Tyler, who we lost in Afghanistan. First of all, I'd like to thank these guys because they're going to give of themselves, and that is a great attribute for people within the community. Pay's not very good, but they're going to give of themselves, and I applaud them for that. Retired teacher, been on the board for a little over four years. We've gotten a lot accomplished in that four years. I've been very proud to be a part of it, and the reason why I ran the first time is the same reason I ran and running this time. Cali County was very good to me. I came to Cali as a 25-year-old non-traditional student who read on a fifth-grade level and did fourth-grade math. When I left Cali, I read on a college level and had negotiated college algebra. So I can honestly say Cali's been very good to me, and that's my chance to give back. Very proud to have been on the board, and four more years would be fine with me. Thank you for having me.
Hi, my name is Brian Sanderholm. I've been on the board this last term and really enjoyed what we've accomplished. I have a wife named Cindy. I've been in Ark City since the 70s, so I've lived here most all of my life. I had three kids. They all three attended Cali County, and they've all three, well, two out of three have benefited considerably from that. I think Cali colleges where kids ought to go before they go away to a four-year school. And my business has done well in Ark City, and I decided that when I got my business paid for, I was going to try to return some back to Ark City and Cali County. So this is what I've decided to do. And with your help, I was elected, and I feel like we've got a lot accomplished. So I'm going to try to run four more years and help you out some more. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Gary Wilson. Somebody asked in the movie Sergeant York, how do you get in this valley? And they said, we was born here. I was born here in Ark City. I've been in the Ark City area all my life. My wife's name is Sharon. She just retired from ADM 43 years, and I retired here about three years ago from my own company. We started it here in Arkansas City, and we actually did work worldwide, making products for various businesses and entities. I'm a graduate of Arkansas City High School and also Cali College. I've been on the advisory board at Cali College for probably the last 10 years anyway. When I was in business, we donated thousands of pounds of materials to both the FFA program and the college program for their welding and some of their tech courses. I was three and a half years on the school board and 12 years as District Two Cali County Commissioner. Cali College is in District Two. The reason I'm running for this position is I'm concerned about the industrial side of our training that's being done at Cali College. I'd like to see it expand a little more. I'd like to see the resources located to provide the products that are needed to expand these because I'm still in industry. I'm doing maintenance for vector technologies out of Strathairfield, and I talk to a lot of people in industry, and one of our biggest struggles is finding qualified people. Not necessarily people, but qualified people that have skills. If you've got a skill, you can have a job tomorrow afternoon, and I'd like to ensure that that type of training is going on. Thank you very much.
Rules for questions this evening. Questions have been handed to me from the audience, and I will read the question. I will arbitrarily decide who is going to go first and in what order we're going to proceed from there. Each respondent to the question will be given two minutes to answer the question. They will then pass the microphone, as I directed, to the next person to answer. So we'll begin with this first question this evening. What do you plan to do with the houses on the south side of Washington Avenue? And Mr. Hanson, we'll start with you.
To be honest, I'm actually really not very familiar with this issue or what property it is that we're discussing, so I don't feel that I can make an educated decision at this time, but I would look forward to being able to make that decision in the future.
As I understand it, the houses are part of a 20-year plan. Some of it was gifted, some of it to be purchased. The 20-year plan, however, is probably not a viable project due to the cost. So at this time, I don't believe we will do anything with the houses.
Pass the microphone, Mr. Graham.
I don't know. The master plan would account for the acquisition of those places if we don't have them already. And, but the master plan, of course, is long-term. I think it's more like 25, 30 years, and we tweak that master, or we will tweak that master plan as we go along with strategic planning. And if there, I believe that the board would be agreeable to if we have a need for building or any kind of expansion in that area, that we could work that in real nicely.
The Washington, the houses on Washington, the acquisition of that is looking towards expansion of the college. The so-called master plan's not a master plan. It's a land acquisition, a facility building plan. It has nothing to do with a master plan with education, but facility and land. The school plans, they use those for different functions. They have not finalized them.
We acquired two lots over there just recently, and those were given to the college. And actually, the space that we have there now is not hardly big enough to do anything with. However, the expansion of our dormitories, I see that in the future. I also see, would like to see a science mathematics building that we could incorporate on that space, but as of now, there's not enough space for any of those. So, and we're on a basis now where we buy as we need it. And like I say, the ones that we have now, one of them was given to us, and I believe another one was purchased four or five years ago. And there's not enough room. There's several houses between them, and we have to gain those areas as they come up for sale. And right now, that hasn't happened. So we need more space, and we're kind of public lock until those things come ready for us to acquire. We don't have, we can't just go in and take them. We don't want to do that. So we have to acquire them as we can.
Well, the way I understand it, the master plan that we keep referring to is nothing but a wish list, in case our population of students grow up to a certain point where we're in need of more buildings or more dormitories to help the students do what they need to do. So it's just, we're acquiring property as it becomes available, like the other gentleman said, just in case that our population gets to the point where we need the new buildings and the new facilities to help them out. So it's just business. That's what we have to do.
I feel like that anytime you can gain property, especially if somebody's going to come up and give it to you, it's a pretty good deal. And a master plan is a good deal as long as you take into consideration in that master plan what you need, do you need it, and can the public afford it? Because there's public money that helps operate this college, and it's fine to grow. We need to grow in a common sense way that we don't outstrip our ability to pay for it.
Mr. Wilson, if you want to just hold on to the microphone, there is a follow-up question. What would you see as future plans for Cali expansion?
Well, I think that would depend a lot on where we see that the expansion is needed. Science and technology has been mentioned. You do a study. You see what the need is and what it may be in the future. Then you sit back and you take a look and you see which direction you want to go. But moreover, you make sure that you can afford to take that step before you take it.
Mr. Sanderholm, same question.
Enrollment numbers are what it's all about. If you don't have the students coming in, the new students coming in, then it's okay for us to stay the same size that we are. In the event that our enrollment goes up, then we need to be prepared to provide the new facilities that the additional students need.
We, as at Cali County, see that we are governed almost by the unemployment level. When the unemployment is high, we have lots of students. We have a large pool to draw from. When it's low, we don't have that pool to draw from because those people are working. Right now, the unemployment is about 6%. About five years ago, it was 12%. And that dictates our student pool. For about, I think, almost 30 years, it was up around 10%, 11%, and now it's really low, 6%. And Cali has done a good job of keeping our student level pretty well the same. So right now, what do I see that we need? I would think that probably dormitories would be our next step. I really believe that. We, every year, we turn students away into dormitories, and that's where our college makes a large amount of its money, is in dormitory. I would like to see new dormitories built. The thing that people don't realize is that Cali was one of the first colleges to offer a graduation online for, in all 50 states. So why would you want to come to college if you can get your diploma online? Well, the college experience, activities, those type of things, those are the type of things that will gain us more students, and I think having the dormitory, building more dormitories is next in line. Thank you.
Mr. Hanson?
Thank you. Yes, I'm not sure that I have very much to add. They've done a pretty good job of listing some examples. I know a lot of what would go in would be based upon the strategic plan and then what the changes that would then be made to the master plan. I do agree with Mr. Juden. I do know that housing is an issue, and so I do agree that dormitories would probably be appropriate use of such space. But I think you'd also probably want to look also, based on the strategic plan of where you want the college to go, what kind of programs you're offering, and also make decisions based on that as well.
I believe the first thing to look at is the technical buildings. We need to get the technical courses and programs up and running. The industries in Cali County are dependent on that. The more trained individuals we have, the bigger pool, and you'll have a bigger draw to bring people in. As far as the housing, I was visiting with Nick Hernandez, and he had an interesting idea. And as a caveat, I'll put a disclaimer out, as I do own one of these buildings I've been ready to talk about, but his idea was to take all the downtown buildings, the upstairs in all these buildings, and turn them into apartments. And it's within walking distance of the college. We don't have to put a $16 million building up. If you're going to spend money, spend it on these buildings, make the downtown revitalized. I thought it was a good idea. Thank you.
I think Cali College will continue to use some wisdom in acquisition in that when the need arises and falls within the long-term plans, we should do it and because probably we're going to grow. And it's nice to have things in place that you can use, and land acquisition is very important, and as long as we stay within our fiscal responsibilities, we should be totally aware of the opportunities there.
My thoughts on land acquisition and building construction says we need to be looking at what the potential market, what type of students can we get, what programs can we offer, and what can we draw? You can't build a 5,000-person campus and get 2,000 students. So we need to be looking closely at what the real future of college is of the population.
Mr. Brigandini, if you want to just hold on to the microphone there, I'll let you start the next question. The next question is, how do you feel about Cali's partnership with USD 470 to allow students to take classes that count for high school and for college credit, to graduate with both, or be able to transfer to other colleges?
I think it's been done in many colleges, and I think it's one of the best things that has ever happened because in many cases, the brighter students are just wasting their time that last year in high school. If they can get a couple of college courses out of the way, get a head start, and Cali has the fact that they've already worked with them, then it increases the probability of them coming to call.
I'm in agreement that it's a good idea, a good plan, and we're putting that into use, and students are getting a jump start on college education, and their grades are coming up, and everybody is ahead when we do that.
Back in 1984, I did the very thing we're talking about. I did carpentry through Cali College when I was a junior and senior in high school. And as long as the programs are accredited, where the hours transferred to any school you want to go to, it's a great deal. It didn't cost me anything to do that entire program. I believe I got 35 credit hours, if I remember right, of class times. Absolutely wonderful.
Yes, I'm also in agreement as a family man with four kids. I'm really excited about their opportunity when in high school, having the opportunity to go to Cali, take some of those courses and be close to, or at least have some of those courses under your belt towards an association. So I'm in favor of it.
One of the things that maybe people don't realize is that Cali College was the only school in this region to be able to offer Pell Grants to high school students. What a great step that is, and what a great compliment that is to your college. When we're talking about Oklahoma, Kansas, and this region, that is a great honor for us, and it's good for the students. That's what's the best part of that. And I think that there's nothing better than to have quality students who are going to high school and also going to college. It only makes sense. So here they are, and we're accommodating them. It's done all the way across the United States, except we can offer them Pell Grant when many of the colleges can.
Cali College does everything they can to help any student that wants to get an education, and this just reflects a little more on that. When they're able to get the kids out of high school, their junior or senior year, and give them the jump start to get into college and to get their credits going, it just can't do anything but help them out and let them grow. So yeah, it's a wonderful idea.
I'm one of the fellows that did that. I started in 1968, my senior year in high school, taking college credits. I did a dual deal, automotive and welding technology at the same time, and I varied it where I had my academics along with my, what we called then Vo-Tech courses. In 1970, I was the AVTS representative to the Kansas State Legislature. At that point in time, they were considering giving you college credits as an AVTS student, and the state legislature was interested in hearing how we felt about that. And basically, it was because you went to Vo-Tech. In those days, you weren't smart enough to go to college, which was totally wrong because there were some people that needed both, and then when they went on to a four-year school, of course, they had the credits to do so. Case in point, one boy I helped through several years ago, got kind of fouled up on what he had and needed to have some more credits that would transfer. Cali stepped up to the plate, helped him out, gave him an extra year, worked on a scholarship that he had. When he graduated Pittsburgh State, he graduated top senior in his class. And I always felt like the effort that was made on my part was nothing, but on the part of college up here, Cali was what made the difference in that young man's life, is being successful.
You'll just pass the microphone to Mr. Sanderholm. I'll ask you to begin the next question. What are your three priorities as a trustee of Cali College?
Well, my number one priority is to help the students all I can. If the need comes up in a question or anything that I can do for them, I want to see them do the best they can. And then my second priority is with the college, trying to make sure that we're financially stable and we keep on the good side of the money part of it. And I think number three would be just to listen to all the faculty and the staff and the students and do whatever I can to help them out.
When you're elected to this position, I feel like you're elected because people think that you can make good decisions, and I think that's very important. We kind of have to look into the future because we have to see the direction that education needs to go. Several years ago, when I was a kid, Vo-Tech and automotive were probably the two biggest courses. courses at Cali. And the agriculture has gone by the by, and the reason for that is there's just no demand. So we have to be able to see where we need to go with education, and we have to accommodate those needs. People complain about having to pay taxes to Cali County.
College.
And what they don't realize is that for every dollar that the college uses, we have a return of $12. So the school uses a dollar, it put $12 back out into the community. Wow, what stocks and bonds wouldn't you buy for that kind of thing? I'd like to give a dollar and get 12 back. So we have to, to make sure that our money is going in the right direction. Probably the third thing that we have to do is, as a trustee, we have to work with the administration to give them our ideas on different situations. Not so much that we're in charge of it, but what we're doing is giving our opinion. So our opinion is, I hope, important to the college.
So I think one priority that I would have, as they've also said and alluded to, would be looking at growth. Obviously, I have students to have a viable college, and I would like to, you know, look into, as you said also, you know, looking into the future. I think we need to look and see how kids today are receiving their information when it comes to enrollment, maybe looking more to social media in addition to also getting out there in person. Another thing that I'm passionate about with my relationships with the students, you know, that we foster is I'd like to really see an improved student life on campus. I know we have a lot of great people already working on that and moving that in the right direction, but just having more things for kids to do together and on campus would be great. And the third thing I would say is strengthening community partnerships between the college and businesses. As an employee of a downtown business, sometimes I feel like we're not called on enough, you know, to contribute and to help out and to get involved with certain events. So I'd certainly like to see the college and the community come closer together in that regard.
I think the number one priority is always the students, the experience and the education. That's probably always what should come first. Number two, the community, because we are the taxpayers, we need to justify how the money's spent, but not be afraid to spend it if it's needed. The final one would be the staff at the college. We need to make sure that they have the tools they need, the materials they need, the facilities they need, so they can give a proper education.
Will we wear out the welfare of our students, and when the dust clears, that's really what we're all about, is the, is the student. And another priority I think that we need to work on is being sure that the college is an integral part of the community and vice versa. And we need to also keep a close eye and keep the mill levy as low as we can.
My approach may be a little bit different. I would like to look at the individual courses that are being taught at Cali and if they're being accepted at other schools, at the higher institutions. If we have a science or physics, whatever course, that it's acceptable to KU or K-State or the other schools of both. And the same idea, I'd like a review of the programs themselves. We have 70 to 80 different programs going through, and are they what the market's looking for? They need to be looked at on a profit-loss basis. Some programs you want to keep where they value maybe actually money loser, but has a value to your community. Actually, that's my three, I'm sorry.
And Mr. Wilson gets the last word on this question, all the way down at the other end. Yes?
Well, I think the fiduciary responsibility is pretty much at the top of the list. If you don't have the funds to do what it is you want to do, obviously, you can't do it. I would also like to look at policy. Boards make policies to see that they're fair to the students, to the faculty, and to the average working person at the college. Morale's an important thing, and everybody needs to have buy-in, and if you don't have it, then things don't run very smooth. Making sure that the students are receiving the education that they're paying for, and making sure our graduation is up, and that we're putting out students, the people in industry, people in business, want to get their hands on. That's how you get to be successful. You've got to have a product that everybody wants to get a hold of.
For our next question, we'll begin with Mr. Graham. Mr. Graham, what courses would you like to see brought into the Cali County Community College, or what courses would you like to see expanded there?
I think that we really need to work hard on courses that work getting students ready to go right into the workforce if they want. If they want to go on to a four-year school, that's great. But I think our community expects us to create courses that will help them with people they can hire right away at a decent wage, and I believe that we work hard on that. I think we can do better. We're in partnership now with people like Rubbermaid and Galaxy, and with kids going right during, during their classwork to work at those places, and they get a paycheck. And that kind of thing is really important, and we need to do all of that we can.
Mr. Brigandini?
One that I'm not sure, the volume that Cali teaches right now, the EMT field is pretty important. There's a big market that they have trouble finding people. I know Cali already has police sciences. I'd like to see an expansion of that, because that's another market where there's a lot of positions. The county sheriff can't seem to find them today, or even the York City Police. So those two fields, I think, are probably the most important that I can see at this time.
Mr. Green?
The first one I'd like to see is more metalworking, as far as maybe even blacksmithing. I know it's an old trade that most people don't believe is even a viable thing, but the Artist Blacksmith Association has a huge following, and very few schools in the United States teach it. So that'd be a big boon. Right now, there's a large following with the TV show Forged in Fire. A lot of people want to learn to make knives. So with that trade, you learn about metallurgy, and that also goes to the sheet metal business like Western Manufacturing and GE, Cessna. So they would all work together. And on another personal note, I'd love to see culinary classes, because I like to eat.
Mr. Hanson?
I am also, you know, a fan of thinking about, you know, some of those trade or vocational jobs as well. So I think, you know, you'd want to look and see, you know, what courses you're already providing and how you grow those in a, you know, fiscally responsible way. And that being said, I also know that technology is huge right now. I think that strengthening your computer sciences department would be of great value. And a lot of people are going into the medical professions, so anything in that regard would be great as well.
More than adding a program, I would like to see us expand our nursing program. There are several colleges in the state that have nursing programs, but I feel like we need to expand ours. And that's, that's a program which is in dire need of more nurses. So I would like to see our nursing program expand.
I'd like to see us look into getting into heavy equipment operation and maintenance, you know, like with Caterpillar and some of the bigger earth-moving companies and things like that. I think there's a big need for it, and I think our location could really be beneficial to us and to the students both.
A lot of good suggestions. One I'd have would be a life class. When in industry, we saw kids come out to apply for a job, or we would go down and talk to kids in different groups at the college, which we've done, and we've done it at the high school. We told them, we said, "We don't care what your GPA is. I couldn't care less. I want to see your attendance record. If you will not go to school, you won't come to work. If you'll go to class, we've got some good teachers. They can teach you something, but you have to be there." And most of them can't read and write legibly. They couldn't balance a checkbook if you held a gun to their head. They need some classes on how to manage life, and that in turn will make them more responsible, and that's what you have to be if you're going to get up every morning when you don't want to and go to work. I think each and every one of the volunteers felt that. But because you're responsible, you have to do it.
We'll ask Mr. June to begin answering the next question. If elected, would you include a public comment addition to the Board of Trustees' agenda?
I'm not exactly sure what that means.
Is the framer of the question available?
Yeah, instead of the 72-hour requirement, which I understand is needed, but the public comment is something that's likely to come and ask you a question without having to get on the agenda. You limit them to a certain amount of time. That's all that happens, they just ask a question.
I see. I see what you're talking about. You know, I don't like that stipulation that much, the 72 hours. I can see why it's there, but I really don't like it. It's kind of like, since I've been the chair, there's been people that have shown up that wanted to talk, and I've kind of waived that a little bit and let them talk, because I feel it's a public forum to an extent. So I would have no problem with adjusting that, no.
Mr. Sanderholm? Yes?
I'm all for it. I think transparency is a wonderful thing. I think if any of you have any questions, we have the answers. We're obliged to give them to you. So that's just what I see life.
There should be a public comment section, and as Mr. Tweedy just stated, you can limit it to three minutes, or you can limit it to five minutes. But basically, they would have to state their name, and they would have to state their address, and then their question. Now, if they wish to continue beyond that, then I think you need to ask to be placed on the agenda, and then let the board know what your question will be, so they can have the opportunity. And obviously, people like to play gotcha. And I guess the point is, if they ask you a question and you don't know, just say, "I don't know," but I'll be happy to get you an answer and get back with you.
Mr. Hanson?
Yeah, I also would not be opposed to something in that regard. As I said, I think transparency is very important, and the more voices we have coming from the community, the better. But I also am in favor of limiting that time, because there are going to be other things on the agenda that the board will need to get to, so I also agree with that as well.
I cannot think of one thing to add to that answer. I don't have a problem with limiting the 72 hours or eliminating it completely, you know, time limit, and there's times when something comes up that you don't foresee. Thank you.
Yeah, I've often wondered about that 72-hour clause we have, and I would not be averse to an open question period with a strict time limit on not only the each individual, but in that section of the board meeting, because I don't want to be there till midnight.
I agree 100% with transparency important, but once again, they only have a limited amount of time, so I agree with a short time period.
If you would pass the microphone to Mr. Green. Mr. Green, the next question goes to you. Much has been made tonight of the allusion to a master plan. The question is, have you seen the master plan, and do you agree with it? Is it or should it be available to the public?
Okay, yes, I've seen the master plan. And it was available to the public for a time, it was on the website. And what was happening is the people that would look at the plan and say, "Hey, that's my house," and then they offered to sell it for about five times the amount that the house is worth. So that cost the taxpayer a lot of extra money. So it was determined to take the plan down, and if you look at the plan, it also has about a $150 million price tag on it, which in Cali County is probably about $150 million too much. So the plan is a good guide. It's a wish. It may even be something that we can draw from to do strategic planning. However, I do not believe the master plan is viable in any other form, other than it's a wish and maybe a possible way of a direction.
Mr. Hanson, would you respond to that question, please?
Sure. I've actually only seen the master plan briefly. I was under the impression that the college was currently in the strategic planning phase, and that, you know, change, changes to the master plan could and would be made based on that strategic plan. In terms of it being available to the public, I do feel that transparency is a great thing. Obviously, he brought up some of the concerns with that. I still think putting it out there and letting the public know what your plans are as an institution is a good thing, and what was I, do I think it's viable?
Is it or should it be made available to the public?
Yes, it should be made available to the public. What was the other part of the question?
Do you agree with the master plan?
Okay, I've only looked at it briefly, so I really don't feel confident making any statement per our con.
If you could see the master plan from 1991, that was the last time we, we had a master plan before the last one we did. It looks absolutely nothing like what we have. And why is that? It's because we have different demands than we thought we were going to have. We also didn't have the, to acquire the land that we thought we could get, and so forth. And that happened again in this last time. We have to look at where our trends are going, and also where we can put it. Because we had plans on receiving some ground from the city. Didn't work out. So that kind of turns our whole thing upside down. So if someone said earlier it was a wish list, that's exactly what it is. But how true to fact is it? Probably not very, probably not very true to fact at all. Probably not very, probably not very true to fact at all. What we can do is what we can do.
When I first started looking at the master plan and what was involved in it, I asked a lot of questions from the administration of the college. And the answers that I got was that it was, in fact, a wish list, and it would be affected by the number of students that we had enrolled. If our enrollment is to go up considerably, then the master plan starts to become a guideline that we go back and look at and decide from the master plan where our priorities are. So it all hinges off the enrollment, the amount of students that we have. The master plan, it really, I don't really think that it's something that we ought to spend a lot of focus on. I think times change, like Mr. Juden said. As time goes on, we need to be able to adjust. And I think we do a very good job with that.
I really have no comment. I have not seen this plan, but I think Mr. Sanderholm's comment was pretty close. It's a wish list. We used to kid each other back years ago about Gwen Nelson's master plan. So in truth, it's probably the same master plan, it's just been updated since then. But any entity that's planning on moving forward has to have a master plan, and generally they do. And it's basically an outline, a what-if outline. So, thank you.
Come down to Mr. Bergenini?
These so-called master plans should be called a master land acquisition and building plan. It is not a master plan because it does not consider the student population, the possibility and probability of getting that population. It's a super wishlist, which Cali will never see that much. It's just, you can't get the student population to support what's on that plan.
I think the master plan is a guideline, and there's no way to adhere to the details in it. But we need to know the direction we're going to go and also the creation of that master plan. They did a lot of, it's very expensive, but they did a lot of contact with the community, which is good, as to what they thought ought to go into that. And there's some of the things that came through that that were all right. But just to plan our lives around the master plan won't really work. But we do have strategic planning every, I think, three years, and that kind of keeps us up to date with the things that are going on, the student population, the economy. And so I think if we depend more on that strategic planning and use the master plan as a guideline, we'll be okay.
You've got to start that one. Before we choke anyone here. We've got about four minutes left, and I've got two questions, so I'm going to choose to ask only one of them. Mr. Wilson, I'm going to start with you, and we'll just bring it right down the line to conclude. Do you feel that Cali County Community College should try to use Cali construction businesses when they purchase products that can be purchased locally?
Reason for that is, we have people in this community that have their life savings invested in their businesses here. They're as good or better than anyone in Wichita or anywhere else. We should give them the first opportunity to bid. If they can't meet the bid, then fine. But the way we did it on the county, if they're within a few percent, give it to your local people, because they're the ones that are paying the bills.
That's absolutely correct. That's the way it ought to be. If they're anywhere close, we ought to consider that they're in the community and the money stays in our community that way.
I agree completely. People within a community, their tax dollars go to our college. But yet, we also have to accommodate the other taxpayers. We can't overspend because someone is local. But I do agree that if they're within a certain range, that we should give them first priority.
Nothing really to add. I agree with Mr. Juden. I do think that, you know, you want to give them an opportunity, but there is the bottom line. So certainly give them an opportunity to meet that and stay local if possible. But if that's not possible, you have to make the right decision for the taxpayers.
Being a business owner, I would agree with that completely. We need to look at the business within our community. To go even a little further, when bids are put out, we need to have them open in a meeting where there can be disclosed. The bids need to be put up, and everything needs to be on the up and up. Everything needs to be equal, and we need to have that information available post-bid, so everyone can get the opportunity to see it, not just be invited and go from there.
I agree totally with the other candidates, including Bob Juden. And it's just, well, I don't agree with him a lot, but it's just common sense.
I believe Ark City has a policy of something like between 5 and 10% higher than a local company can do. And because of the multiplier, spending that money locally, it makes a big difference. I'm hardly in favor of it.
That concludes our time with the Cali County Community College trustee candidates. Let's give them a big round of applause. Now, thank you so very much for being here this evening. We'll take a short break. Five minutes is the message that I'm getting. And we'll begin next with the city commission candidates.